Please rouse for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Callahan.
Commissioner Henderson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapper.
Here.
Vice Mayor Holmes.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Attorney DePard.
The new business special meeting tonight, our contract within insurers police department is up at the end of the year, so to do due diligence, we have to put out the bids, and of course, the only other people to bid with is our sheriff's department, which I'm glad they're around. Thank them. Thank you. What we're going to do tonight is have a presentation by the sheriff's department, then followed by a presentation by Indian Shores Police Department. Any discussion amongst the committee, council up here, and any public comments, we'll take at the end. The vote to who will represent us as a law enforcement agency will be held on April the 13th at our regular meeting. If there's no questions, you've got the floor.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I would like to say first that the sheriff wanted to be here tonight. I talked to him last week, or I guess it was last week, and he's in Washington DC. He had to be in Washington DC in the morning, so he had to leave tonight.
You just got the first half of my presentation?
Well, see, I covered it.
First of all, good evening, folks. What I'd like to do is introduce some staffer by the name Julie Uppman, which I know some of you have been talking to. She's director with us. She basically puts together a lot of the contract language and pricing. And then also Captain Mike Leiner, who is our, basically our South County captain responsible for contract cities. So basically, you're right, the sheriff is out of town. He had to go to Washington DC. Unfortunately, he had a prior commitment, so he asked me to stand in. I'm Dan Simmich, I'm the chief deputy. What I'd like to do is kind of just go over a couple of things. You're pretty familiar with contract law enforcement. What I can do is tell you the differences between what we do and what you might have heard we do. First of all, you contract law enforcement for a lot of reasons, but one of them being that it can save cities money and provide additional resources, or in some cases, it increases the law enforcement coverage and basically gives you additional resources. So we have tonight two proposals to present to you, and one does that. One saves money and gives you additional resources, one increases your law enforcement presence and additional auxiliary services. Basically, when we do a contract, how the sheriff works it and how we work in our other 13 contract cities, is that you retain total control over your level of service. In other words, you tell us if you want to enforce noise complaints, if you want to do ordinance violations, you kind of, we customize it to what the city and the community want. So that's, that's the first thing is, so to take away that, I guess myth, a lot of times we hear when we go around and talk to different people that are in cities, that they say, "Well, you know, if you contract with the sheriff, you know, we lose that personal touch." Well, you don't. You actually design it your way. And what I tell everybody, because I've been around for 35 years now, I started when I was five, so everybody knows, but bottom line is, when I go around and talk to people, I say, "We are your community." You know, a lot of our folks live here. So, you know, we know what you want, we want to work with you, we'll work with the liaison of the city. Some, obviously, some cities have city managers, some have commissioners that are liaisons to law enforcement, so we work with you on that. And then what we do is, when we decide to contract and work out an agreement with a city, we work with them on the best fit for the city. So the folks that work to our contract cities don't bid, they get handpicked. And once they're handpicked, they're out of rotation for bid, and they have that city and they work through that city. However, what I'll say is on the flip side of that, if the city is uncomfortable with someone, we also can move that deputy out of there and find a new fit that works better for the city. And that works, a lot of times that works to both sides' advantage. So that's the first thing. Just a little history, we do contract with 13 cities. We've been doing contracts as long as I've been there, and a lot longer. I understand South Pasadena came on even before I was there, so over 35 years. What I say is, go out and talk to the people that do it with us, that have the contracts. I think you'll find that they're happy with our service, and it's customized to their city, and you don't lose your city's identity or anything like that. We also do auxiliary services contracts. In fact, your current provider, Indian Shores, we provide them with basically records management system, property and evidence, forensics, and dispatch. So we customize our contracts to different cities. Topin Springs, we do their record management, we do their dispatch, you know, so there's cities that do not contract with us for law enforcement services, but yet auxiliary services are provided to them. So, and again, it's, it's, can be piecemeal, it can be the whole package. I'm going to try and give you the 50,000-foot level, folks, because I don't need to get down into weeds with it, and then what I'll do is I'll give you two proposals where we are. But one thing you should know about us, we are a triple A accredited agency. We, the law enforcement accreditation, we just went through the accreditation, we're waiting for the final. We passed all 488 national standards. We're also accredited under the American Correctional Association, and also NCCHC, which is a medical association out of the jail, so we're triple A accredited that way. Our structure is basically from the law enforcement side, which I'm going to, I'm going to focus on tonight, because we have many bureaus, many areas of expertise, and we have about 2,800 employees. But for the most part, you're concerned with law enforcement services. So we have 800 law enforcement deputies, but the three major bureaus that will have the most contact with a contract city, usually are patrol operations, investigative operations, support operations. These bureaus comprise of basically sworn members and non-sworn members that have expertise in any particular area, whether it's forensics, or a major accident investigation team, what have you. That would come to bear with part of the contract if you needed it. Just for instance, on services, patrol operations, and again, as opposed to just your basic law enforcement officer responding to calls for service and working traffic and that sort of thing, we do do traffic enforcement, DUI enforcement, we do beach patrols, noise violations, marine patrol, K-9, major acts investigation team, which they'll come out and they'll, on major accidents on, on your roadways, they'll come out and they'll do a digital scale of it and everything. It's, it's pretty impressive when you see the quality of the investigations, and we have teams that just do that, and they go all over the county and work the major wrecks. We also have the dive team, flight unit, and SWAT, and hostage negotiation teams. When you contract with us, there's no reduction in response times, and quite frankly, depending on how you contract with us, it can actually be an improved response time and improved law enforcement coverage. And that all depends on how you tell a contract. One of the other major bureaus that would have contact within the city is the follow-up investigation, which is Investigative Operations Bureau. And with that, we have arson auto theft unit, burglary unit, the porn unit, child protection, CPID, crimes against persons, criminal intelligence, economic crimes, narcotics, robbery homicide, sexual predator tracking unit, and special victims unit. So that encompasses, and that's a mouthful, it encompasses pretty much any kind of crime that needs to be followed up, that's what we have people to do, and they're experts in that field. We, we just started a regional computer forensics unit, with everybody now with the iPhones and the computers, and a lot of different computer crimes going on. We actually have a unit now, we combine forces with the Secret Service, and we have a dedicated lab at our office, and we have people just assigned to that, that are trained in just computer forensics, going into the iPhones, going into the computers when you have a crime. Because now, most of the time when somebody's committing a crime, they're texting each other, that sort of thing, and they're able to go in there with a search warrant and get the appropriate information out of there. So they have a lab set up for that. And that's one of our newest accomplishments here with the Investigation Division. And it works out well. And we help other agencies as well. When I say it's regional, all the way down to Manatee County, Pasco County, Hillsborough County, et cetera, and they all come over, and we built the lab, and we share the lab with the folks that are qualified, they come into the lab and work there as well. So that's just one of the new areas that we're looking at, and you've got to stay progressive with what's going on, and we just thought that was cutting edge, and we had to get involved with that, so we do. The last thing I want to talk about, the last bureau I want to talk about, is support services. Support services basically is just that, they support the law enforcement function or the detention function at the office. And that's computer aided dispatch, our comp center. Those of you that haven't seen, and I know we had an open house, if you haven't come down to our office and seen the comp center, it's pretty impressive. We do a joint comp center with the county, county 911, and our call takers are in there. And it's a joint operation. But we have that, the computer aided dispatch. We have forensics crime scene. I would put them up against anybody in the country. They're nationally renowned, they do a great job. So for the follow-up investigations from a forensic standpoint, they have a lot of resources to come to bear on an investigation. Everything from DNA testing to different blood splatter interpretation, et cetera. We have experts in that. Latent print processing, obviously you have a crime, you know, it just used to be the latent prints, you pick up a fingerprint, and you could prosecute somebody, find them, and work the case. Nowadays, we do DNA evidence, touch DNA. So if you have a car burglary, we'll go out and process the car burglary, and not only we look for fingerprints, but we're looking for DNA, because it might match somebody else, because now by state law, everybody that goes through the jail system gets tested for DNA, and they go into a data bank. So you're able to solve cases that way as well. And with our fingerprint side of it, we have our AFIS system, which when you take a fingerprint and you run it through, it goes through the computer and scans every fingerprint that we have on file, and it's, and it's a basically statewide database. So that really helps us solve a lot of burglaries and that sort of thing. We also have property evidence unit. Obviously, we store hundreds of thousands of pieces of property and evidence. We also have, it's called prison transport unit. And what we have found over the years, it really becomes beneficial because it keeps the deputies in the cities, in the squads. Used to be, years ago, if you arrested somebody, you put them in a car and you drove out of the city. Well, that left the city empty if you only had one deputy on or one police officer on at that time. So what we do now is, we have a prison transport system. And what they do is deputy calls, said, "I got one that's arrested, and I need a transport," and the van comes to them. So they don't go to the jail. All the paperwork is done electronically, and it's sent to the jail. So before the, the person that's been arrested gets to the jail, they're already, the paperwork is being processed already, and they're at the jail. So it cuts down on leaving your assigned zone, so it gives you more efficiencies, and that's what we're looking for. Excuse me. Little things we do, if you don't mind.
I'm forgetting the call that everybody else has been making.
So what we do is, some of the little things that we do do, because we've learned that over, over the years, customizing our different functions within cities, and depending on what city it is, we've always had this request for house checks. Well, now we have a computerized house checks and vacations. It's automated. So if you're going on vacation, you call up, or you get online, and you say that you're going to be on vacation from X day to X day, and we would go out there, and every day it gets documented, every time they went out there, it gets documented. You can print that log out, I can print that log out, so we know that the house is being checked while you're gone. So that's one of the extra services that we provide as well. We do crime prevention surveys. We'll send people out. If you say, "I got a business and I want to see what's the best way we can do this," that's what they do. They send people out that can evaluate the business, security cameras, whatever it might be, and they give you recommendations. Also, we have Neighborhood Watch. And Neighborhood Watch, we try to get the community involved, because we can only do so much, it's a team effort, it's a community effort. And we're in your community, we want to be part of the community, and as such, we have Neighborhood Watch, and we get them involved, and we have regular meetings, and, and it helps. It really does. The other thing is, we do is extra patrols, there's requests for that. If, for instance, you got, say, from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock at night, you, you understand that there may be some speeders in an area, and you're being bothered by that, you can put an extra patrol for that, and they'll make sure that the deputies get out there and actually do the extra patrols during that period of time. Basically, how we do it is, chain of command is, the first line supervisor handles most of the complaints that are handled out there on the road. If somebody, a citizen complains, they'll take care of it immediately. And then if, if they can't, it would go to the shift commander or admin lieutenant, and then obviously Captain Leiner. Captain Leiner is, like I said, he's our captain in charge of all the South County contract cities. So he's the liaison to the cities, so if there's an issue that can't get resolved, he would come out here and sit down with you and find out what the issue is and work through it, and resolve the problem. He also attends the commission meetings. I mentioned earlier that there's no bidding, they're, they're based on availability to perform services that your city requires. There's no normal rotation of deputies, you get, the deputy you get that you want stays in the city, so that you don't have every six months, somebody new coming in. They also, the deputies that are assigned to Reddington Shores, they back up other deputies as well in an emergency, and we need to make that clear, because a lot of times when we go out and talk to different communities, even ones that we contract with now, they think if you got a deputy that's in this city, and Indian Shores is calling for help, that they shouldn't leave the city. Well, we do. Okay? We do. They will. Okay? That's just the way it works. It's about safety, and Chief Hughes and I talked about this in the past, it's about safety. We're going to get people there. We're going to backfill immediately, but that's how we work it, just so you know that right up front. So our, our contract prices are basically our actual cost of an average deputy and an average sergeant. So our fuel costs are basically that, our costs, and also maintenance and replacement. In 2003, we commissioned consultants from GSG, which is a consultant firm that does government work, and they developed a formula, and that's how we came up with contract prices. So one of the things, when we get down to it, a lot of people say, "Well, you'll give us a low price to get in the door, and then you hype the price." Well, that's not the case, and you can see that by the history of our 13 contracts, and you can talk to any of the cities that we have, that's not the case. You know, they'll go up a few percent, they'll come down a few percent, and it fluctuates. So one of the things here is, I know that one of the requests were, what would it take just to do law enforcement services for this city, standalone law enforcement services? Well, it would basically be, and we, we did the stats and stuff, it's one deputy on every shift. Okay? So it's one days, one evenings, one mid. Okay? When you get down to that cost, and I think we provided the mayor with the cost on that, Out of that, that's actually an increase, okay, of $41,341. But what that does is, for that price, you're getting one deputy assigned to your city that's assigned every shift and doesn't leave your city. Now, unless it's a backup, and which we will, and whether it's North Reddington or Reddington coming over to Reddington Shores, or we go to Indian Shores to back up Indian Shores Police Department, but it's an increase of $41,000, but for that $41,000, what you're getting is that deputy's in your city all the time. So on the 30,000-foot level, that's one deputy every shift. So the second proposal that we talked about was basically, and my understanding is, and the sheriff informed me that he had talked to Mayor Queen from North Reddington, what we would propose, that I think would be beneficial to everybody, would be that Reddington, North Reddington, and Reddington Shores combined efforts, and at that point, if they all combined efforts, it would put two deputies on day shift, two deputies on evening shift, and one deputy on midnight shift, and what that would do is, for cost savings wise, because the other one I couldn't save you any money on, because that's just straight up what it is, Reddington Beach would come down in their, and we based it on population, again, we had to come up with some sort of a formula. Reddington Beach would come down by $10,000, North Reddington Beach would come down by $11,000, and Reddington Shores would drop their cost by $94,000. So the reason being, by combining your efforts, it makes it a lot more flexible. So what does that get you? Like I said, two deputies, two deputies, one deputy, and all the auxiliary services that go with that. Because I can tell you, if an incident happens, I can flood the area with 30 deputies in probably five minutes, between Madeira Beach, Indian Rocks Beach, coming over from Seminole, they're coming, okay? We're not going to leave, and the sheriff wants me to make that very clear. Regardless of what you all decide tonight, we're here for you. Okay? So regardless of what you do, okay, that's a personal decision as a city, but we're here to support you either way. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Do you mind if I have questions?
What's your normal increase, if there is such a thing, from one year to the next, if you will?
Okay.
Do you have a built-in percentage in the contract?
In fact, what I'll do is defer, if you want to come up, Julie, and discuss it, because Julie does all the contracts, she can pretty much tell you where we are with that.
As the chief explained, what we do is, we take the, the average cost for a deputy. We went for about five years, starting about 2009, when the economy tanked, and nobody was giving raises, including us. Our contracts went up less than 1% each year, and mostly that was being driven during that period of time because fuel costs were skyrocketing, because that's the other big cost. You have the personnel and you have the vehicles. The last couple of years, we've started giving raises again, you all probably have two to your employees. The costs have been going up, less than 3%, but more than 2%. So somewhere between 2 and 3% a year, as the raises have been pushing.
Total, per year?
Total, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Two to 3% of it.
And I could tell you, I have some numbers where, older ones, but I was kind of doing that a little bit today. For instance, in 10, when Julie was talking about, we went up 0.65%. I'm sorry, we decreased 0.65%. Then in 11, we increased 0.27%, 12 was 3.7, up 0.37. And then we had, obviously now, that the economy was getting a little bit better, and nobody's had raises for years, we went up, so it went up 2 to 3%. But again, it's our cost based upon the formula, it's the same cost whether you're in the city of Reddington Shores, or whether you're in Safety Harbor. That's the cost. It's right up front, and it's pretty transparent, so, and you get what you get there.
One question I didn't ask the sheriff the other day, is this, do we work under a year contract, two-year contract, three-year contract?
They're annual contracts. They're annual contracts.
And we do special events, like July the 4th, okay?
I can address that for you if you'd like.
If you would.
Okay. That is one thing, thank you. That's one thing I can tell you how we do it. Cities do it differently. We charge $45 an hour for a deputy sheriff that's fully equipped, car, vehicle, whatever, coming here, okay? Has a specialty to employment. However, what Dunedin and several other cities have done, they've built that into their budget, they've added that into their budget. So if you have the 4th of July celebration, okay, we just did, was it Valspar, the golf tournament up there? We had 225 deputies working off duty for about five days, I think it was. So we provide the resources, we do a contract arrangement with, like Valspar, or like a Baptist church needs traffic, it's $45 an hour with a two-hour minimum, okay? But when it's with the city, the sheriff is flexible enough that he says, "If you want, you can add that to your contract and put that in your contract," so you don't have to do any additional contracts or anything. So if you have a big 4th of July celebration, you know the big events that you have, your city knows what big events you're going to have, and if you as a city decide you're going to provide the security for those events, the law enforcement side of it, we can figure that out in advance and put that in the contract. And what that does is, it locks you into that price.
So it would be an additional to this price?
If you want additional besides the deputies that are working here, yes.
It would definitely need more deputies on the July the 4th.
Absolutely, absolutely. We do it for North Reddington, we do a lot with Mayor Queen, we bring, we bring a bunch of people out, but, but here's what you do get, okay? When we do that, we see a public safety need on the 4th of July to be out on the water with the boats. So we flood the area with boats. That's on us, okay? Because we feel there's a public. Now, if you have a specific event to your city, and you have an event in your city that's specific to your city, well then, you know, yeah, if it's above the average deputy calls for service kind of thing, and you want additional, you'd have to do that. However, what I will say is, all the auxiliary services that come with it, the helicopter that does the flyover to make sure everybody's off the beach, the patrols on the beach are part of the deputy's jobs, and if you go with a, a hybrid with the three cities, you can have one person working during the daytime and still another person riding the beach, you know, you have that flexibility, where if you don't have that flexibility, if you only have one working, you don't have that flexibility. They're on the beach, and they got to get off the beach, they got to take the call, et cetera. And, and it works out well. But for the most part, we also have the flexibility, when I say that, you contract for, for the deputies, but we also see a public need to get out on Gulf Boulevard, work traffic control. If a deputy in a city sees a problem, he'll get a specialized unit in there. There's no extra cost for that. If you have a major accident out here, and somebody gets run over, and God forbid, you know, it's a fatal accident, we send an entire team, 12 people out here, to investigate it. That doesn't cost you a dime. We also, when it comes to accidents, just because I know the congestion out here, even, we'll even work parking lot accidents. Okay? So we'll work parking lot accidents, we'll work accidents in a row, we'll work major fatalities, major accidents, but that's no additional cost to you. The only additional cost would be, is say, you want 10 more people on the beach, then we can plan for that, but that'd be part of your contract.
Okay. So it'd be additional money to this contract?
Correct.
Whichever one we did.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I got one more little strange thing we do with the county. We, we have a parking lot, we share 50/50 on the money.
Okay.
It's a county parking lot.
Okay.
Right now, the, we have, the police department in Insors picks up the money.
Okay.
So I don't necessarily need them to pick it up, but I need somebody, when it's picked up, if one of our employees picked up, with that employee. I don't want him walking around with that money.
Mayor, we're your police department, we're your sheriff's office, we're, we're there for you. You customize what you want.
Okay. Would that be additional cost?
No.
No.
We'd use the on-duty person. That's why, you know, it works out that way. No, now, the sheriff doesn't bait and switch, he doesn't, he doesn't tack on, he's not going to nickel and dime. You know, this is what it is. If you'd like us to be your, you know, primary police service, we're there for you. If not, we're still there for you. Again, it's just not on a contractual basis.
Okay. Anybody else have a question?
I was just going to say, Mayor Adams, because I write the contracts, we look at them every year. We have, we have several contracts.
Could you come up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our mic's not always pick up when you're on.
Okay, sorry. We have several contracts where we've actually, because the city has requested, we've included a list of things that they want to be sure the deputy is responsible for.
Okay.
Including locking and unlocking the park gate, delivering council packets to council members before commission meetings.
I know they do that, to the House, right?
So it's, as the chief said, but that's right, whatever you want in the contract.
It's a customized service, there's no doubt about it. What we do is, we have our CAD or our computers in our cars, and you see them, I mean, that's how we get our calls for service. But that's also how we communicate internally and externally. So what happens is, like Julie says, and I don't want to gloss over that when I say customized, it's customized. So I can go out to my, my machine right now, I can bring up contract cities, I can click on North Reddington Beach, and it will tell me and lay out, as a deputy sheriff, what my responsibilities are on day shift, what my responsibilities are on evening shift, gate codes, all that stuff, all the things that a city wants to customize, because it's your city law enforcement. So that's how it works. That's how we, again, keep that going. But the other thing is, once you get somebody in your city, and you're going to get comfortable with people, you know, and we want you to be comfortable with people, we want them to be part of the community, well, you get to know them, and, and, you know, you're going to go, "Hey, I need you to take care of it." They're going to take care of it, you know?
And I will say to this, I've talked to Mayor Queen also, and to Mayor Simons, in Reddington Beach. Mayor Simons is not sure he would have to take it to his council. Mayor Queen is completely agreement with their proposal of sharing deputies, because I know in one letter that came in, it had to be that all three cities agreed, and they, as far as I know, all three, as you say, would.
Yeah, and I can only go, the sheriff told me that, and I just passed that on to the commission, because I, you know, I wasn't in on that conversation, but my understanding is, what I can tell you though, you know, with the numbers, it is a $94,000 savings to you all, and I think 11,000 and 10,000 to them respectively, something like nickel and dime. Yes, sir?
Mayor, our little community here down at Reddington Shores has become quite famous, and I don't know if you're aware of that, of our celebration of our nation's birthday by presenting excellent fireworks for our community and communities north and south of us. And I might understand you that in honor of this birthday, these services wouldn't be a presentation to us? We'd have to pay extra for law enforcement activities?
No. What I'm saying is, if you need more than is assigned to your city, and more than is assigned to the specialized units that are out there patrolling the boats and that sort of thing, yes, if you say, "I just need traffic control for 10 people," because you understand this, we have 13 contract cities. So we'll work with you. We'll put traffic units out. We'll do that sort of thing. But to say, if you say, "I want 10 deputies specifically in this location just to do this," yes, it would be. But I would venture to guess, no matter who you contracted with, you'd have to do that.
Sir, how many officers do you feel that we would need on 4th of July, and time-wise? My feeling would be you haven't been evening from 4 to 5:30 or so.
Well, that's, you know, again, we have a whole special events section that plans those events for you, and they sit down with the city, and they go over your past traffic patterns. And we do it now for North Reddington and Reddington. You know, we do it for Indian Rocks, you know. So this isn't new to us. Your city would be new to us, but it's not that much different. It's, you know, the same Gulf Boulevard, same lanes going back and forth, so we have to work with you on that. But, you know, the bottom line is, we're going to work with you. We're not them against us, and we're not going to nickel and dime. We're going to work with you.
Anybody else?
Okay. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming and...
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Thank you, Julie. I know you got it started before. All right. Anything from the audience on that presentation? Chief Hughes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had one question, if I could. Of all the auxiliary services that you offer, are there any of those that the town would be receiving if they contracted with you versus receiving potentially through the other department if the town stayed the same? All the backup services, all the major accident investigation, all the forensics, I don't know what they contract with you for. I know there are add-on options that many municipalities have.
Well, right.
Even though they have their own police department.
Well, and if you're a full contract city, you get all that included. If you contract with Indian Shores, like you currently do, they contract with us for many of those services. So you'd still get those services that are the contracted services that they have. I believe it's forensic, records management system, computer aided dispatch or dispatch. And now they recently just, I think we're getting ready to sign an MOU for major accident investigation, so that they're going to have one of their officers respond with our team. So that's what you would get from them. Now, do we provide helicopter support? Yes, we do. We will continue to do that. They had a robbery. We'd sent plenty of people out there to help them. We're going to be there to help them. Like I said in the start of the presentation, we're not going to leave anyone hanging. We're going to, we're all citizens together, and we want to make sure everybody's safe. But you get...
So under the mutual aid agreement, whenever any of those services are needed, they're going to be provided, whether they're contracted for with Indian Shores at this time or not?
On a priority basis.
Right.
So if they're tied up somewhere else, they're not coming, they're going to go, and then they're going to come when they're clear from their primary duties. But you get them as a primary, as a contract city. So we have, you know, again, we have canines. We have traffic. The traffic deputies, they work everywhere. They work the contracts. They work the unincorporated areas. And that's a roving unit that just does that. DUI unit, same thing. 4th of July, you mentioned 4th of July. 4th of July, we get the DUI unit out, and they call what they call wolf packs. We try to stay away from the checkpoints because they're so personnel-intensive, and they're not as productive. They're good for publicity, and they're a good show and a deterrent that way, but actually effective, not so much. We find that, in our agency, we find that the wolf pack situation works better. So we would put out our DUI units to do that, traffic units to do that. And of course, if you're having a major event, that's where those auxiliary services would come in as part of the contract, because we're not going to, first of all, we're not going to leave our deputies hanging out there and be understaffed, but we're also not going to leave the city hanging out there and being understaffed. And we make sure we get the boats out there. And obviously, you know, we have our boats in Indian Shores. They've been there for 25 years now, I think.
So basically, all the whistles that you offer are available indirectly at this time, but on a priority-type basis?
On a limited basis. Yep. Okay?
Thank you. Chief Hughes?
Mayor Commissioners, guests, our guests. I'll start with a presentation, and then I'll go right into my budget for Reddington Shores. We've given contract services with Reddington Shores for over 30 years. And the presentation will be in three different areas, personnel services and the budget itself. The Indian Shores Police Department consists of a police chief, two corporals, one detective, six patrol officers, one administrative assistant, three part-time dispatchers, three part-time officers, and six reserve officers. I have a minimum of two officers on duty 24/7, which means that Reddington Shores gets one-half my workforce. Now, you get one officer 24/7. As has been turned out lately, you've had a lot more need for police services in Reddington Shores, where you're actually getting two officers and three officers almost daily. The corporals are first-line supervisors. They work shifts just like the officers do. The detective investigates all the criminal cases. They're assigned to him, and he works as one entity for both towns. If he's got a call that's really hot, Indian Shores will take care of that. And he gets more leads than one in Indian Shores, and he'll switch over to this one. It's more or less just one big town to him. Patrol officers do all the things that police officers do. Patrol, take calls, patrol the streets and the beaches, initiate investigations, make arrests, perform lifesaving measures, enforce state, county, and ordinance laws. And then, as far as personnel, I have, three officers have bachelor's degrees. Three officers are four certified instructors by FDLE. Three teach general courses, two teach firearms, Leslie the Weapon, Use of Force, and tasers. Four officers are FTOs, or field training officers. One officer is certified by the Florida Department of Law Enforcement as a traffic homicide investigator. He's the one that, we just enacted an MOU with the sheriff's office today through Indian Shores Council to get on the MAIT program. It was actually voted in on the 8th, but it was reaffirmed today. They enacted it on the 8th, and on the 9th, we had a fatal accident. They charged $55 per person, per hour, for the MAIT call-out. And there were, eight officers showed up. They were there for three hours. And at $55 an hour, you do the math, and that was the savings. The only thing that cost me, I had to pay that officer three hours to handle the call. The difference, about $1,300 was the savings. All my officers are laser and radar certified. All my full-time officers are national pollutant discharge elimination systems-trained. That's the pollutants where they're blowing, the clippings into the roadway and all kinds of other pollutants that are being put into the water. All my officers are NIMs certified. I have one officer certified in property in Evans. One officer's a marine law enforcement certified. And I have one officer certified in arson detection canine handler for private insurance. He takes a week's vacation every year on his own to go to this train, just to keep your certificate active. The longevity is one I'm really proud of for Indian Shores. My guys aren't going anywhere. They've got a long-term investment in the community of Indian Shores and Reddington Shores. Years ago, they used to use Indian Shores as a stepping stone. Fresh out of academy, come to Indian Shores, get their feet wet, get some experience, and they go to a rigor agency. But the dynamics of that has completely changed. I've got two officers that are 25-year veterans. I got one that's 24. I got one each. One's been here 14, 13, and 12 years. Two officers been here six years, one been here for five. And the two newest ones, is one's only been here two years, but he's retired California State Officer and recent hired. He's got prior experience with Pennant Park. So as you can see, you know, my guys are highly trained, highly educated, and they're here for the long-term investment within the town. Russel, we wouldn't have such a numbers of longevity here. On the services, the chief deputy explained an awful lot that we do exactly the same thing as he does. We do do house checks. We have prisoner transport. And one important thing is, we pay for the vehicles out of Indian Shores Capital Improvement Fund. We have never charged Reddington Shores for a vehicle. We have always taken care of that within our budget. So the cost is not transported to you. And the same thing is, if we're having a trouble, we take our direction from the council. Whatever you want us to do, that's what we do. There was mention about some of the increased safety of pedestrians. We've had two pedestrians hit out here in the last couple of weeks. My guys are really stepping up on the pedestrian enforcement, in both towns, actually. We received grants before for Department of Transportation. We've already applied for another grant. Before, it wasn't much, but we're applying for like $20,000 to really step up our patrols expecting pedestrian and passing on the right for Indian Shores. Also, we've had a rash of car burglaries. We stepped up the patrols on the backstreets because of that. And right now, it's dropped, the crime rate back there on the car burglaries dropped to zero. 4th of July, I have every officer I have working 4th of July, full-time, part-time, reserve. Every one of them work, and we've never charged Indian Shores a dime. We have extra resources. We put out there, we have our police belt. We have two ATVs. We have four SUVs. Every one of my, we also have the communications trailer with our own radio frequency that we could, that we use just for that area. And we've never charged Indian, Reddington Shores a dime for any of that. And the parking machines, I don't know if you're going to have one of your employees do it, but we do it automatically. I've got two officers assigned. They maintain the machines, they empty the machines. If something's broke, they work with your employee to get it fixed. I talked to the officer, and he said he spends about eight hours every week collecting the money and making sure the machines are already working. Matter of fact, one of the guys wasn't here. I ended up emptying the machines yesterday. And it, you know, eight hours a week times 52 weeks times his pay grade, it's about $11,000 a year. We do for free. It doesn't cost you guys anything. We've recently purchased a mobile traffic speed measuring trailer. It works. We got it really reduced cost from Treasure Island. Only I'm going to do, I'm going to get it fixed up and put some of our decals on before we actually put it into use. Again, no extra cost to the town. We've really upgraded our emergency operations center, which Reddington Shores, if anything happens to your building here, you actually go with when we evacuate. But if anything, God forbid, happens to your building here and you can't function, Reddington Shores is invited to stay with us at Indian Shores. It's our buildings at Cat 5. You can work out of our building until such times, you can make other arrangements or get your building rebuilt. So far, we've bought body armor, tasers, shotguns, rifles, rifles through grants or capital improvement program without a single cost to the Reddington Shores. The next part, about a month ago, Mayor Adams said that he had received an email from a guy from Lake Tahoe. He was going to move to Indian Shores. He wanted to know what the crime rate was in the area. So he did his own search. Mayor sent it to me, so I scouted checking on it. He said that Indian Shores, Reddington Shores, was one of the safest communities in the state of Florida. And I checked it out, and it's mostly true. See by the graph I gave you, Reddington Shores is 83% lower than the national crime rate. Diddy crimes that occur is 1.44. The chance of being a victim of crime in Reddington Shores is 1 in 191. And the crimes decreased by 8%. Well, if you're already 83% below national average, I wouldn't expect the crime decrease to be much more than that. What is 100% is 100%. And then, the next page is the cost per population ratio. I get this from all the town halls on their online services with their population and what the expenditure is for law enforcement. You can see that right now, Reddington Shores is paying $181 per person for the expenditure of $434,938. That's one officer guaranteed, and you're also guaranteed one-half my workforce. To give you an idea of some of the community services, my officers don't practice community service. We are community service. I don't know if anyone's seen this email that's put out. This is what was put out with the officer committee. He was on duty, saw an 80-year-old gentleman trying to dig holes and bury some pylons. The officer stopped him and said, "You're too old to be doing that." And the gentleman actually dug the holes and buried those pylons. Just using an idea that what my officers are doing is...
That gentleman's sitting in the audience tonight.
Oh, there you are.
Are you really?
Hey, Dave.
Maybe you didn't hear.
So it just gives you an idea of what my officers do every day. It just so happened this time that there happened to be a camera there, and somebody knew how to work online. So that's my presentation as far as what we do. We've got all the same services and everything that the chief deputies spoke of. Prisoner transport, the buying of the cars, having house checks, now we're a part of MAIT. So it's not a question of, one's got more services, one doesn't. To me, it's a question of the officers, the longevity here, wanting to be here, to have invested time in the community, wanting to stay in the actual community relations we have. Which leads me to the next part, which is my actual budget. At noon today, Indian Shores approved this budget, which goes along with Section 8 of the contract we have with Reddington Shores, that Indian Shores has to have their budget approved first before I can present it to you, when it was approved today at noon. So that complies with Section 8 of the contract and also with not to exceed fees for services. Reason I have to present it by March. It's in four categories, administrative costs, personal services, capital improvement, and operating expenses. And I'll have a brief statement following each category. First one is administrative costs. The only increase I see here is the labor attorney fees. We're going to be going through contract negotiations with the FOP in this fiscal year. So that's the reason for the increase in that. Personnel services, which shows the biggest decrease. Since I don't have a captain administrative position, I saved a lot of money there. But the only increases were in health and insurance, which everybody's health insurance has been doing up. And I've seen, I got a really big jump in working with comps, because I have one officer that's been off for almost a year due to a medical condition, with a dramatic decrease of $54,822. And again, it's for elimination of administrative position, and I had a new hire officer at a much reduced rate. Operating expenses, the first one is professional services. I never budgeted. We are charged $87 every time we take a juvenile to the Pennant County Juvenile Assessment Center. E.D. Williams just couldn't pay it. Julie kept sending him bills. He'd just throw it away. He would not pay it. I'm one of the White Sheriff's Office, didn't take him to small claims court. But anyway, I'm on a different mind. If they charge us for it, I'm going to pay it. And I've never budgeted. But now I have. I've budgeted $348 to help pay that fee, because normally, we try to give the juvenile to their parents, release them to their parents. We've seen an increase in batteries, assaults. We had one juvenile that we caught with a gun in his waistband. I mean, it's, these kids have to go to jail. We can't release them to their parents on these. That's the reason for the increase on that one. Then the increase in the communications, I had the sheriff's office contract, I had it up to 20 call-outs. We were at 14, and right now, we've had 13 out of 14 already used. And it's because we've had two suicides and five deaths, not counting the burglaries and other things and the robbery next door. So I've upped that price. And the maintenance and gas supplies, I'm doing that mostly because I'm having an aging police fleet. We haven't replaced a cop car in two years. Hopefully, I'll get one replaced next year. But that's the reason I've upped that a little bit. The police education, we're just not running enough tickets. I don't know if anybody's writing very many tickets because they've gone so high. And my police training fund was dwindling too much, so I put an additional $3,000 into that. fund was dwindling too much, so I put an additional $3,000 into that. Everything explains, you know, the next one with the capital improvement, that's where we would purchase a car, so there's no cost there. It gives you a summary of my administrative costs, went up $3,000. Personal services went down $54,000. Operating expenses up $8,000 for, for a decrease of $43,425. And on the last page, it just shows you all, all the line items that everything's, that we charge in the contract. And most importantly is that for the police services contract for Reddington Shores is dropped from $434,938 to $419,739, for a difference of $15,199, which I think is a pretty good price. I'll entertain any questions if I have.
Yes, sir?
I got a question on the, right in the beginning, when you talked about patrol officers and how many, and you're saying two patrol officers on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Yes, sir.
Is that three tricks?
No, we do it in two. My guys work 11.5 hours.
Uh huh. Okay. So that gives you break tricks and there are two.
Yeah, it actually saved me an extra shift.
Okay, thank you.
And looking at the contract, I just want to make sure everybody knows or looked. The one that was presented, some numbers are, need to be corrected on the one from the Sheriff's Department. Since the one from the Indian Shores is down from what it was last year, there's some numbers at the bottom need to be corrected like that.
The numbers they're presenting are for the 14, I'm sorry, the 15, 16, but the ones I'm presenting from a 16, 17.
Right, I'm looking at the numbers, right.
So it's a $79,000.
Current year, that is correct, current year.
Correct.
That is, what, Indian Shores? That's the Indian Shores contract, $479,753?
No.
And that's saving on option three?
Option three went down.
That's it. It was maybe something that they had down.
It's saying for the current year, and that's what it says, current year, this one was $434,000.
Right. I'm just saying, if you look at these, I would give you.
Right, right.
Anybody have anything? Anything in the audience? Dean, would you step up here, please, sir?
Help us out a little bit.
Here you go.
This takes a minute.
State your name and where you live.
John D. Thank, cleanest living kid in town. Don't smoke, drink, or chase young ladies anymore, damn it. Now, I've lived in this town 50-plus years. I've known every officer for the last 50 years that's been in contact with us. One thing that I like about our people is, is they know who, they're like the cop on a walking beat years ago in, in the neighborhood. They know who's, who to check on, who's got problems, who's not, not doing the right things. And no offense, gentlemen, but you, you're new kids on the block. Give you an example of that. Exactly. I got my car parked, my door was open, and Officer Kennedy came by, didn't see me. And he stopped, saw the car door open. He checked to see if I'd fallen somewhere, which I tend to do now and again. At 90 years old, it's not quite as good as you used to be. He stopped, him and my neighbor came around, looked, looked over, checked on me, see if I was falling someplace and couldn't get up. They even went out, looked off the dock to see if I'd fallen off. And I even have some people on the, your board here who stop and check on me now and again here. Now, those are the things that, that really matter for a lot of things. Now, they, the, they knew everybody who needed problems and who needed help, and they've done it for us. I thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dean. I'd like to add a little bit that I spent eight years in law enforcement in Tampa Police Department. And I'm sure, and knowing the sheriff, and that nobody's going to get mad, no matter what decisions made.
Oh, incidentally, one more thing. Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dean. I didn't mean to. Go ahead.
One more thing. Was there any provisions, if it went to their way, that they would hire our people?
Okay.
I didn't hear it. I didn't hear that one.
Okay, okay.
It was mayor. I can address it.
What'd you, what'd you ask and then make him have?
Just like any other city that contracts with the sheriff, St. Pete Beach and stuff, yes, everybody gets assimilated into the agency. And we did that with the civilian employees as well as the law enforcement employees.
Okay. Thanks. So that answers that for, did you hear that, Dean?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, where I was, you know, we talk about one man, two men, three men out here patrolling in this area. And I guarantee you, and I've seen it in front of my house across here, if something happens that they need police, you're going to be walking over them. There's so many that show up. And so don't ever worry about not having enough coverage. I can assure you of that. I'd like to thank both of you. We will be voting which agency on the 13th. I think one question I wanted to ask you, because that's an annual budget, annual contract. Did you want to?
Five-year contract.
You want a five-year. All right. So let's.
There's a question over here.
Oh, yes.
Well, this point out before about using the new figures from Indian Shores, what was presented from the Sheriff's Department, is that this year's, and that will be an increase for 10-1?
That's from, from this point forward, yeah, it'd be 10-1.
10-1, there'll be another increase on this or?
No, I believe, and I can't speak to Julie, and I apologize because we got the numbers from the current. But if anything, it would be a 2%, like Julie said. But I can't speak to that because I don't know the numbers. Again, if we get the numbers, we'll recalculate them for more than half a cent of the year.
Okay.
That's, that's the best I can tell you.
Okay. That'd be good. So with that, thank you very much for coming.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
And with that, this meeting is adjourned.